Ladies and gentlemen, it is 7:02 PM Central daylight time. And we're going to call the order this, the June the 12th, 2025 meeting of the Dixon County Planning Commission. Brother Ramey, if you would direct our minds, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, brother. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this day and thank you for allowing us to serve the county that we live in. We ask that you release some guidance as only you can. Everything that we do, except for the religious side, Jesus, amen and pray and ask it all.
Amen. Mr. Hayes, would you call the roll?
Todd Berry.
Here.
Tina Ferris.
Here.
Darren Green.
Here.
Todd Lindsey. Robert Qualls.
Here, sir.
Tommy Brown.
Here.
Jeff Chase.
Here.
Randy Ramey.
Here.
Gary Peeler. Amanda Berry.
Here.
Patrick Reagan.
Here.
Mitchell Harden. Mr. Chairman.
According to the call of the roll, a quorum is presence to do business. The next thing I'd like to do is thank you all who are visitors for visiting us this evening. If you haven't signed in on the sign in sheet, I know it's only been out the last three or four minutes to go ahead and please do that on your way out. If you weren't able to do so on your way in, so we'll have a record of your visit. Did anyone ask to make a comment from members of the public to the commission?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll address that very shortly then. Before that, I want to talk about the minutes of the last meeting. Thank you. Okay, here's the two citizens who are going to address us. That's good. All right. Does anyone else have any comments or amendations to the minutes of the last meeting?
I do, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Berry.
Since I'm fairly new, and this was a hot topic at the last meeting, there were several things that I felt like may needed to be added in because I'm not sure where this situation is headed.
Okay.
So I'm not quite sure how to do that, so.
Well, if you would specifically address the places in the minutes where you feel the record is incomplete, we'll try to work with staff to get those put into the final minutes that'll be published.
Okay, on page six, at the very bottom, someone had asked, I believe it may have been Mr. Berry, about the building details from Mr. James. And he stated those sizes and what had been added on. They, it did not make the meeting or the minutes, sorry. I had addressed the Birch Traffic Study, the setback of the newest building that was being constructed without the permit. The building, the newest building, what the purpose was. There was no stop work order and the state electrical reference. Those were not in the minutes and I know that it's going to the commission. So wasn't sure if they get a copy of the minutes, but I thought those.
They certainly have one available for their reference if, if they choose. All right, does anybody else have any comments? My, my comment about that point you made is I think what we had was that not a, was a traffic survey instead of actual traffic study. Is that correct? Traffic assessment.
Could, could have been.
Assessment, okay. The, the minutes do need to change to reflect that because those are two separate terms of art.
Okay.
One is considerably more detailed than the other.
Okay.
All right. Do, do any of the other commissioners have any objection if things that what Ms. Berry has addressed are added into the minutes before we give them our final approval? Well, now, I, I was, I was going to ask for a little guidance here. I, I didn't know. Mr. Hayes, if you think we need to have amended and revised minutes last month, or can we just say that the commission asked for those things to be added to the minutes and just go on from there?
Yes.
Okay, well, I assume Jeff, is, is that a motion then to include in the minutes of the meeting last month? Then that, that the, that the, all those things that we've addressed here be included in the minutes of this meeting?
Yes, sir.
Does everyone have a, a gist of what the motion is and is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Ferris, seconds. All right, does everyone feel for what we're voting on to, to, to be more explicit in the language of especially on pages five and six of the minutes of the last meeting?
Mr. Qualls, I would like a reread of what was stated. Let's make sure that we are clear.
I, I will agree with that and Ms. Berry, if you would address what you addressed before in a way that everybody, including me, can understand it fully.
Okay. So the first one, Mr. James had given building details as to what was previously on the property. And he came back and said what the size of the building was. I don't know that size off the top of my head.
Okay.
But I thought that was important since it was followed up by the 12,000 square feet lines and sprinklers. So we know the size of the building. Um, sorry, six at the bottom, sorry.
Okay.
Toward the bottom, Curtis.
Yeah, it's, it's the very last line of page six.
And it was actually page six and seven.
And now I'm going to say, and it spills over into page seven.
Right.
Okay, you, you think that, you think we've addressed it, Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay. I have one other amendmentation I wanted to bring up with the minutes. And that was right at the end where it mentioned Mr. Berry abstained. I think it's important for the minister to reflect that the reason for that was that the applicant being client of his and not an unwillingness to vote and participate, but.
That is correct, yes.
When, when I was in that position, I always wanted it to reflect why I had to abstain. So I, I want to extend that to the membership now. All right, well, so if everybody understands what we're voting on, I would request that those in favor of the amendments as restated, state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The opinion of the chair of the ayes have it, the minutes as amended are approved. And now we're going to move on to public comment. And I have two citizens who have signed up to comment publicly. Those are Mr. Jared Gray, Mr. Russell Crowe. I don't think this will be a problem, but we do, we only allow 30 minutes for public comment. So if both of you will strain yourselves to 15 minutes apiece, we'll be greatly appreciative.
It's total, it's three minutes per person.
Yeah, three minutes per person. Good, all right. Let's, let's keep them to three minutes apiece if we can. Mr. Gray, if you would like to come and address the commission, the floor will be yours for three minutes. Would you like to come up here to the front where you can be heard better?
And, okay. All right. Good evening, I'm Jared Gray, Civil Design Consultants. I am the engineer of record for a project that is before you tonight. And so that particular project is the Nashville Getaway RV rezoning. Again, we are asking for rezoning for that particular parcel of property to allow for an RV resort. We have looked at the traffic in a traffic analysis. Everything checks off good there. We have talked with T-Dot, have a current meeting scheduled with them. Again, we are not asking for anything more than one access at this time without replating the parcel, which again, they will, they will grant and we will obviously take anything that they require into the site plan component, which again, will come back to you in that regard. For water and sewer, the Water Authority of Dixon County has been contacted. And I've had meetings with Mr. Michael Rogers with the Water Authority. We will again, site plan related come back. And whenever you see that site plan, you'll see all of the septic information for the soils. Prelimarily, the soils do look conducive. So again, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have whenever we get to that point, but wanted to make sure that you knew that I was here. We do request a favorable recommendation to county commission. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Crowe, you now have three minutes for your issue at this time.
Thank the commission. My name is Russell Crowe. I'm one of the property owners of record relating to this project. I just had a couple of concerns because I received a letter that notifying of a change and had this nice information to contact Mr. Booney if I had any questions two weeks ago, since he was a businessman also. Instead of trying to call him during the day or call him on his off time, sent, sent a nice email, text message, introduced myself, said, when you have a moment, I'd like to talk to you. Until I called over three days ago to verify this meeting was still going on, I've never heard a thing from him. So that throws some red flags to me about whether he's good for Dixon County. That's all I have to say at the moment.
Well, I'll just say, Mr. Crowe, you, you've certainly made your concerns part of the record. And with that, we're going to get into the items for tonight's agenda, starting with item number one, which is the final plat of the re-division of lot one of Spurlock Acres subdivision, tax map 112, parcel 8.10, 3.15 acres, Buddy Road Burns, Tennessee, A1 agriculture. So we need, we need somebody. Let's, yeah, okay, here comes just the man we need to hear from this.
All right, we did Spurlock Acres, I guess about three years ago.
That's right.
And things have changed since then. Of course, y'all know Jones Creek Road and Buddy Road have sewer available now.
Yes.
We did this lot, we wanted to get two lots out of it anyway, but because of that drain, we couldn't get the soil there. But now, since sewer is available, and I talked to Michael Rogers, I cleared this all with him before we proceeded with it, that they will give them, allow them to have access to that, that trunk line across the road for the sewer. So that, that's making this possible.
Yeah. I imagine most of the commissioners are familiar with this spot as that sort of little swale there going through Buddy Road from where you turn there at the end of Rock Church Road and go left if you're going from Nashville toward Dixon. And about halfway back through there, there was a spot that wasn't suitable to be built if there wasn't a sewer, but now there's no impediments to it. That basically summed it up?
Yes, sir.
All right, so the chair would entertain a motion for approval of the final plat re-division of lot one of Spurlock Acres at this time, if someone chooses to make such a motion.
That's my district. I made a motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Ms. Berry to approve the final plat re-subdivision of lot one of Spurlock Acres. Is there a second?
There's a second.
There's a second for Mr. Beatty, who's duly moved and seconded for the proposed plat re-division of lot one of Spurlock Acres. Those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
Mr. Qualls?
Yeah.
We did not have discussion on that?
We can if we need it.
Yes, let's do. I have, I do have a question, Mr. Christie.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, do you have a letter from Mr. Rogers, anything on the intent?
No, I don't.
Is, is that something?
Talk to him just to check it, okay.
Is that something, Mr. Mills, we need to acquire?
So typically, if I have to, water authorities, you get an application for availability.
Yes.
That letter that you get, water authority is typically a year.
Okay.
Says yes or no. I don't know if it has that number.
We don't, Mr. Berry, but we're, we're good with, I'll, I'll contact Mr. Rogers and get him to send.
Please.
A, a letter to the planning zone and all.
I think just as, as a matter of good business, we, we probably need to follow that. I, I can. I'm well aware of what's going on out there. I see the lines. I know, I know what's happening, but I do think having that letter would be important.
I, I think that's an excellent point, Mr. Berry. And of course, you, you know, you know, to get it recorded, it's going to, the, the final approval and CO and everything about it, that's going to have to be in order first. And I, I don't have any doubt that you'll be in receipt of that and it'd be filed with the office well before then.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I'll make sure.
Obviously, Mr. Chair, as per everybody's knowledge, if one of them has to sign the plat, has to sign it before it would be recorded.
Yes.
This is actually subdivided and that's one of the signatures, so he's necessarily going to have to.
Yeah, that's going to have to happen.
Something from the water authority.
That's right.
He will be able to sign.
Yeah, all right.
Do we need to amend that to say proper signatures?
I, I will.
Okay, we're good, okay.
We good, okay. If we are, I'm just going to move on to item two.
Okay, thank you all.
You're welcome. Thank you for your participation. All right, item two on the agenda is the preliminary plat of the Illuvium subdivision, tax map 138, parcel 7.00, 6.62.18 acres, 660 Piney Road, Dixon, Tennessee, 7th District. Please.
Well, this is just a preliminary plat for Illuvium subdivision. It was going to be something else at one point in time. It shows we're going to do acre and a half tracks on the front end. We're going to do five acre tracks on the back end with the new infrastructure for the roads and water.
All right, does anyone in the commission have any questions about this development or any comments about it before we proceed?
I do.
All right, Jeff, go right ahead.
Um, I have a couple of questions which, I have a couple of concerns, but I also have a couple of questions which are in the future, but I would like to know which direction, have some sort of point of reference. You may not have decided this. My first question would be, are these lots going to be sold individually to separate buyers? Do you know? You may not know.
That I don't know.
Okay, um, my question would be, I'd like to know that at some point. Is there a developer involved who's planning on building all of this stuff? Whether they are sold individually or people come in and purchase a house on a lot? You following me?
Not sure either. Mr. Strong can answer that for you.
Okay.
The intent is to sell them individually.
Sell the lots individually?
The intent is to sell the lots individually.
Okay, will there be, and this is again, a question you may not be able to answer at this time, will there be an HOA?
There will be an HOA.
Okay, um, okay, those are a couple of my concerns. I, I voted to approve the prelim, prelim, whatever it was, the last time we had a meeting on this because I wanted to talk with people in my area, my district, get some feedback. I've gotten a lot of feedback. There are some issues as I see it in a number of areas that are, that carry over from when the original intent was to put an RV park there. I had concerns about traffic in the area because those roads are not designed for semis, cement trucks, gravel trucks, et cetera, maybe an occasional one going in and out. I can understand that. But a lot of my, pardon me, my, people in my area are real worried about traffic. Some of those turns, there's no way to get a semi around that without taking up all the lanes. So that's a, that's one of my issues for construction, obviously. If people want to go there and buy a lot, that's one thing. But when we get to the actual construction point, I have a problem with that. Also, the character of that area and most of that whole area surrounding it is all agricultural, single family with acreage. And my concern, again, mine and also people in my district have, is that a subdivision of this sort is not in the same character as what is already there. It doesn't enhance it. In fact, a great many people said it sort of degrades it. One comment was trying to put a square plug in a round hole. So that is an issue. Also, there are, are there any specific, you may not have this yet, any specific building codes, suggestions, lot requirements, zoning requirements for what kind of buildings, houses can be built there? How big?
Are you talking about the HOA architectural route?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That would be under.
The other thing we have not finalized.
Well, okay.
But.
And you may not have.
It will be a square footage of significant size. Those will be $700,000 to $2 million plus homes.
Okay, all right. So those are some of my personal concerns. My biggest one is the Piney. That's a heavily regulated waterway. I don't know if it's a waterway, if that's the correct term, but the river itself, that's something only I, I can have concern about. I can't do anything about that. The state is, are the people who are going to kick in there. I have a real problem with all those septic tanks in, in that flood plain, right next to that flood plain. But again, that's, that's.
Not going to be any tanks in the flood plain.
I'm sorry?
There's not going to be any septic tanks in it.
They are just above the flood plain. I'm sure that that's where they will be put.
If they're put in state regulations, there's no leaching issues.
Okay, again, that's, that's just my concern. That, those are hoops that you guys will have to hop to with, with the state.
Hydrology report done by the Corps of Engineers and T-Deck and they've both signed off on the property.
Okay, well, that's, that's in the good, that's in the, in a good direction. I originally thought, well, I'd like to see what happened, like I said earlier. I, I voted for this to get it through, to be able to do a little more investigation on my part, talk to people in my area. And I don't personally believe that this is right for the area, for the concerns I've stated and for other ones. But anyway, that's just, I admire and I am glad that this is a step in the right direction away from the RV park, that there was so much resistance against, but I feel still, and as do people in my district, that this is not right for the area, my opinion. Thank you, sir.
So I got a question. Does this meet all the requirements from the county? No setbacks or nothing like that as a subdivision?
The plat was evaluated using the preliminary plat checklist. There, there were, there were no discrepancies or corrective comments in terms of the, the building envelopes. I did have a couple of, of corrective comments aside from that, but not from the setbacks or anything from that nature.
Mr. Green, you can always kind of assume that everybody has to meet the subdivision regulations and nothing that this body does unless we're somehow explicitly granting some sort of waiver that we're not ever really probably going to do, that all applicable subdivision regulations will apply. And the staff is empowered and encouraged to enforce all those at all times to make sure that everything we're doing meets those regulations. And of course, I'll even go on and add this as a comment. Any HOA proposal, the bylaws of that HOA will be attached and we'll, we'll get a look at them before this gets final approval. And some of us look at those very closely, I'll just say.
Ms. Hampton, what are your comments?
The first was a citation of the FEMA flood map indicating or including the area's special flood hazard citation because not all parcels are in Zone X. The second was a question if the site was to be served by septic or not. The third was, there was an incorrect form for the planning commission approval on the preliminary plat. And then the fourth was including the site distance in both directions along any existing roads at any point where a driveway or new road was proposed. Those were my four outstanding corrective comments, well, three plus a question.
Do you gentlemen have any problem correcting those issues?
Absolutely not.
Sure. Mr. Chase, I understand your concerns with this plat. This does meet our requirements.
Yes.
But I do feel and, and join you in what you think. And I, we've sat here time after time and we've looked at these large parcels of land in our county being gobbled up by subdivisions. I think that's a separate issue that we as a body have to deal with. These gentlemen have done their job.
Mr. Berry, I, I tend to concur with that and also very empathetic with the concerns. I also will add, as I think, I think Jeff's already said, this is a lot better than what we looked at as a prior use for this a year or two ago, that we were all concerned about evacuating of that many hundreds of people, worried the need ever to rise and how unlikely that would be. And the really heavy traffic that that would have generated. And this, this doesn't do that. And again, the heavy traffic, Jeff's concerns are correct in that when Mr. Chase says there's, he's not exaggerating, if any of y'all have not ever been out that way, about if you had a gravel truck leaving in a flatbed with a bunch of building materials coming on and there's, they meet out in there, it's going to be very problematic. That's just that some really, and especially if each one, everyone who buys a lot is going to choose a different developer and you've got several different people at several stages doing different things. This is going to, this is going to require a lot of intensive supervision, but that, that, that alone is not a reason not to agree to this. And I'm going to call for the question to be voted on unless somebody has another comment. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Is lot five usable?
That's a fair question.
Yeah.
Yes.
There's better acre land there that's unencumbered by the flood area.
It's a prime basement plot.
So, so, would you say there is a, over an acre and a half of lot five is above the flood level as indicated?
I'd say it's about an acre.
Okay, and let's see, that, so there's, there's a suitable building envelope there that meets the. I know you understand the question. Okay.
And then houses in septic areas went on acre lots until two years ago.
Exactly correct.
Yeah.
But we, all right, is there any more comments for commissioners?
And I do appreciate the, the larger lots. I also appreciate the, the HOA, okay?
I think in this case, it's period.
And the, the regulations that could be set forth there.
All right. Let's vote on the motion to approve the. Alright, uh, let's vote on the, uh, motion to approve the preliminary plat of the Louvium Subdivision Tax Map 108, parcel 7.00, 62.18 acres, it's 660 Piney Road, Dixon, Tennessee, 7th District, as with, with the stipulations that have been added by the commissioners and by staff as the objections being addressed. Those who are in favor of approving this preliminary plat, oh, excuse me. Yeah, let's do, let's do, let's do a roll call then.
Motion in a second.
What's that?
We have.
Okay, we got.
We need a motion in a second.
Mr. Chase, are you, will you move to, for a roll call vote?
Yes, I will.
Okay, someone will second that, I hope.
I'll say.
And Mr. Berry will second that. So it's been moved by Mr. Chase, second of a Mr. Berry, that this matter be voted on by roll call vote. So, Mr. Hayes, if you would, call the roll.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I think we need a formal motion in a second to prove this staff comments to be addressed.
Okay, alright. So what the roll call vote will be on is staff approval, right? Or do we have to first say approve the roll call vote motion?
Well, that's what's pending.
Okay, alright. Okay, well.
It's up to Mr. Chair, you just want to call it yourself.
Oh, that's what I was sort of attempting to do, but if we need a motion, let's go on and you all vote to roll call this if you want to. It gets a favorable recommendation from the chair. Those in favor of roll call vote on this issue signify by saying aye. Those opposed by saying no. Opinion of the chair is the ayes have it. This will be voted on by a roll call vote. The question is whether or not to approve preliminary plat of Louvium Subdivision Tax Map 138, parcel 7.00, 62.18 acres, 660 Piney Road, Dixon, Tennessee, 7th District, with the additional stipulations put in by the commission and with the issues addressed, brought up by staff being addressed. That's the motion. Does everyone understand the motion? Alright, Mr. Hayes, if you would call the roll.
Todd Berry?
I'm sorry, we did not have a motion in a second on that.
Okay, good, alright.
We, we need, Mr. Chase, are you?
That's right.
Do you? Of the will to do this?
Who, who is gonna move this?
I motion to approve with staff.
Mr. Reagan moves approval. Who is the second? Mr. Ram is the second. It's been moved and seconded that the preliminary plat of Louvium Subdivision be voted on at this time. Mr. Hayes, please, if you would, call the roll, do this.
Berry?
Yes.
Tina Ferris? Darren Green?
Yes.
Robert Qualls?
Yes.
Tommy Brown?
No.
Jeff Chase?
No.
Randy Ramey?
Yes.
Amanda Berry?
Yes.
Patrick Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Green? The chair notes that there were, uh, approval votes were, counting my own, uh, uh, seven and the, uh, nay votes were two, so.
Correct.
The motion is agreed to and the preliminary plat of Louvium Subdivision with the stipulations made and staff comments, it is approved. And item number three on the agenda is a site plan for level storage. This is tax map number 40, parcel 44.07 of five acres, 49, highway 49 East in Charlotte, Tennessee. So who is going to talk in favor of the, the site plan for level story?
I'll talk. My name's Trent Smith. I'm the engineer for this project.
Thank you, sir.
And we're hoping to do approximately 9,500 square feet of, I guess I'll call it self-storage units.
That's the proper term.
Okay.
Mr. Smith, this is the second phase of this, is that correct? You've already come forth with the first phase of this?
No, we've been here for a, three, three, we went with three meetings. Yeah, but not, this is a first on site plan.
First on site.
Yeah, we did, uh.
Okay, you had a preliminary? Is that correct?
Oh, we did, there was a preliminary plat, we did some.
Okay.
Property changing.
Yes, maybe in May, possibly, is when we saw this preliminary plat, is that correct?
It was before then.
I think it was before May.
Okay.
And I'm, I don't have good memory, but it was, it was a few months ago.
Okay.
And, and things have evolved since that point. So basically, what are the, the, what are the major, are the things that are colored on this, uh, big handout we all got, are, are they the, the things that have changed since the last time you appeared here before this body?
The, the first appearance was a rezoning of the property.
Okay, yeah, we, that was a while back now.
Yes. It was rezoned from A1 to C.
Big one, yes.
What is it called? You're not sure what it's called.
Okay, so, well, this is in the 4th District, so, uh, let's see.
He's out.
He's out.
Yeah, he fell out.
Somebody in, well, yeah, Todd, Todd suffered that big fall, unfortunately. Is there anybody from an adjoining district that feels real comfortable discussing this?
I'm, I'm not an adjoining district, but I do.
Well, if you, if you think you're knowledgeable on this one.
I didn't say I was knowledgeable.
Makes they know about it.
I, I do know where this is at and there are, uh, there are businesses around this already.
That's what I was saying.
I remember the, the zoning request and it was a favorable, uh, and you were, thank you very much for doing things the correct way. I do remember you, yes, I remember you coming in. I was impressed that you were approaching this correctly. What have you changed or what changes have taken place since you were, uh, since this has, this has evolved, Mr. Smith? What, what can you tell us?
Not actually done any, anything.
Okay.
Besides the, uh, site plan itself. We put some, uh, buildings, uh, at different phases, uh, has the upper side and the lower side, and we was gonna start at the lower side and just do a few, get our fence up.
Okay.
We got a lot of, uh, cameras, water, electric, um, maybe even some gas.
Okay.
But, uh, we've, we have located the, uh, where all those things lines are because we took a permit out and put a drive-in, um, earlier.
Good.
But you, you've already gotten T-Dot's driveway connection approved.
We've got to redo it for commercial.
The way, yeah, we have to have an approval from you. We'll get a letter from staff saying it's been approved. They, they need that before they can give.
Yeah, yeah, they're not gonna do anything without that. Well, what is the feeling of the commission? Do we want to go ahead and grant approval to this?
Ms. Hankton, I think has some comments.
Please go ahead.
I do, thank you. Um, Mr. Smith, on, uh, the dimensions of the buildings on site plan sheet C1 and C2 don't match. Can you confirm what the proper, um, dimension of the building should be? And specifically, it's building five, I think, let's see.
Building five is 12, uh, 96 feet.
12 by 108. It's, it's building, it's building seven on sheet C2.0 and it's building, it's labeled as building one on sheet C1.0.
Yeah, I know what she's talking about.
I'm not.
I can show you if you'd like.
Should we come over there?
Yeah, that would be good.
It's on here, it's labeled as building.
Be a good time to have our slides.
Yeah, 2.0, building seven, 12 by 108.
It, I'll tell you what happened, remember you, they had a change, so this is kind of.
Rome wasn't built.
So this is not for, this one, okay, so this is the.
This is correct.
Okay, so for the record, um, you all, so for the record, for the planning commission on, on sheet C2.0, you all would be approving, um. Building seven at 12 by 108.
Okay.
So disregarding sheet C.
Okay.
1.0.
Did, did everybody that has a concern or objection hear what was being discussed there? If not, we'll try to give you a summation of what the, what the story is.
Mr. Hank, to make sure I understand correctly, it, uh, on building, or sorry, on sheet C2, uh, the building that is shown is 12 by 108, this building seven, that, that's the sheet that they're actually proposing has the site plan, that'll be the building size.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. She, C1.0 should be disregarded. Thank you.
That, that sounds good to me. Alright, has everyone got that? That the actual dimensions are those shown on sheet T? Alright. So is there anyone who would make a motion? And again, with the, the person whose district this is not being able to join us this evening, will anyone move for approval of the site plan for level storage?
I'd move we approve the site plan for level storage. Obviously with the staff comments noted in the correction, proper correction.
Alright.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Reagan seconds Mr. Berry's motion to approve the site plan for level storage, tax map 40, parcel 44.07, 49 East in Charlotte. So, think of, think of voice vote to be fine on this. Those in favor of the motion, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motions, please say no. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. And the site plan for level storage, tax map 40, parcel 44.07 of five acres in the 4th District is hereby approved. The next item on the agenda.
Thank you, thank you.
Is rezoning request for Bonny George, tax map 139, parcel 30.07, 9.20 acres, 48 South Dixon, A1 to agriculture to C2, general commercial, 2nd District.
This is a rezoning.
This is, and we're gonna have a roll call vote if you all want to recommend that. And of course, as I always state, for the advantage of new members, we aren't rezoning anything. We're either recommending to the county commission that they rezonate or that they not rezonate. But having said that, I'm, I'm ready for discussion on this if somebody wants to discuss it.
Now, this, this is a rezoning request just off the interstate for you, on Highway 48 South, next to the Dollar General. They would like to open an RV and camping facility. Included in your packet is a proposed site plan and traffic impact analysis. All adjoining neighbors have been notified by certified, certified mail.
Okay, this is my district and I drive by this area almost daily. I do wish you would have gotten a phone call back from Mr. George, Bonny George. I do wish you would have gotten that. Normally, I'm always hesitant on signing a blank check for rezoning from agriculture to commercial because we don't know when that, if they leave, what would go in there. However, in this place, it's in between two commercial businesses already. There's, um, it's right next to the Dollar General. And so I am going to motion that we approve this to the commission to approve the rezoning.
We have a motion from Tina Ferris, who represents this parcel, to, uh, approve the rezoning request. Is there a second? Alright, well, that's, we, we've got several seconds, uh, Ms. Secretary, if you, whoever you pick.
May I, may I make a comment?
Please make a, now, we, we're gonna have discussions. Ms. Berry, go please right ahead.
Um, I noticed, uh, are you the engineer that prepared the drawing?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make a note that under the general notes here, it states that it's within the jurisdiction of Metro Davidson County.
Number one, we will make sure that you have the right, uh, numbers and contacts and you'll have my information as well, as the engineer of record. So I apologize if, if you were somehow not contacted. That, that's not something that we're going to do, uh, moving forward. And it wasn't on purpose now. Please accept my apology on that. There could be a couple of things. Again, this is a, really a concept plan, but we wanted to show as much information as possible. So there could be a couple of things that are metro, et cetera. All that will be absolutely fixed once we get to the site plan component and you'll see a full site plan that will include all the dimensions and everything that specifically is related, invert elevations of the storm and how all that works. We'll have the information shown for the septic, et cetera. All of that will be shown again at the site plan, uh, stage.
Do you know if these are, if it's intended for short-term rentals or long-term rentals?
It, it will be really intended more for short-term than long-term. There could be a couple of folks that might be contractors or something like that that might need a month-long type rental, but it's not something that we're going to go out and, and actively pursue, nor are we going to permit somebody to say, oh, we just want to live in a trailer out here. This concept plan is based upon a true resort, uh, layout standard. In other words, all the pull-through spaces are designed so that you have the ability to park anything that is made with a tow vehicle. They're 100 foot, the, the, the drive-through spaces are 100 foot long. Again, those are site plan type issues, but I want to bring that up. The, the backend spaces are 50 foot on their own with a dedicated, uh, parking space next to them. So we, we are not jamming everything in. Those are, again, site plan related more than they are rezoning, but I want to make those points since you're talking about specifically those site plan issues.
Nobody's gonna be underskirting trailers at this.
No, they're not.
Okay.
No.
I, I think that, that allevies a lot of, alleviates a lot of people's concerns.
Well, yes, what are the septic plans here? And I assume that each individual, um, site will have its own hookup?
Uh, each individual site will actually have two hookups.
Okay.
Uh, because a lot of your larger buses, et cetera, will have a front and, and a rear. And again, what you're seeing is the concept because you have to begin the process of looking at, one of the important things is, is septic. And that's one of the things that we did. We also, uh, pulled the soil maps for the area and I've already had preliminary discussions with, uh, geo, uh, science individual that will be the soil scientist on this particular project. Again, it is based upon the actual site plans. That's the reason why, uh, we don't come to you with a rezoning request with all that in hand because the site plan might change a little bit between now and then. But preliminarily, he has looked at the soil maps as have I, and, uh, it appears to be conducive. We will know definitively, yes, we can do that prior to site plan approval.
Just a, a point of note, there, there is no sewer service from the Water Authority of Dixon County at this site.
That is correct.
Yes. I, I, I too, Ms. Ferris, agree with you. I do not like signing blank checks here. And anytime that we rezone, there is always, uh, opportunity for this not to see through as it is. And then we have rezoned something. That could be a number of different things. So just keep that in mind, ladies and gentlemen.
I, I will just add, not that anybody asked me, that I'm very familiar with this area. I mean, my mother's friends were all down there because she taught school down there at Hillcrest back in the 1940s and I've spent a lot of time in that area. The fact that this is still zoned agriculture is sort of a relic of, what, 40 years ago when zoning came to the county. If you were starting from scratch today, which obviously is not something we're doing, this would be zoned commercial. And it's, this is a place that's logical to be commercial. This is not somebody trying to pull spot zoning out a mile and a half from any other commercial business because if anyone's familiar with my record on this body, nobody objects to that. If anyone's familiar with my record on this body, nobody objects to that any more stringently or any loudly than I do. But this is, this is a logical development for this part of the world, I would say for sure. But is there any more discussion from the commission? You go right ahead.
No question.
Mr. Brown.
Mile. Maybe less than a mile.
Less than a mile.
Yeah.
I think that's an excellent point, Ms. Brown. I think we all need to be aware of that. I was, but I I I like the body as a whole to be aware of that. So just take that into consideration.
Only other comment, can you make sure that? Bunny George gets a hold of my guy over here who was trying to get a hold of him?
As indicated, we'll make sure that that happens.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I would clarify just a couple of quick.
Please, please, please. We're not in that big of a hurry, please.
Traffic assessment before this looks like the expected daily trips are four hundred and forty nine.
Right.
The number in there. Okay, so I want to make sure the applicant's aware that when he comes in the site plan. He will need a full traffic impact study because it's more than a hundred and fifty trips.
Thank you, counselor.
And just in terms of process, uh, leave this here in, uh, this proposed used as a special, special exception under C two. So before they come to this body, it's a trial plan, I'll go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for approval of that special exception first, right?
Yes.
Hmm.
We'll make sure it was clear on that. That's going to have to go to VCA before you see anything else on this if it's the will of County Commission to.
Thank you, counselor, for those important points that are very salient to this discussion. Does anybody have anything else that needs to be taken into consideration before we vote on the rezoning request?
It was one, one thing. Mr. Mills, could you, can you recite to us the businesses that can be put in C two?
So these are, you know, given time here, rezoning something, I know we talked about this last month.
It's, it's worth hearing again.
You're approving those permitted uses. You're also permitted an applicant to seek those special exceptions because that's a separate category of zoning designation. They're pretty robust. I think you want me to read them all, but there are. Thirty different types of uses under C two.
Trade.
You know, C two is the general commercial district, general resolution. That's established to provide area in which the principal use of land is devoted to general. And highway commercial activities along the principal thoroughfares in Dixon County. So you've got wholesale trade from motor vehicles to grocery stores to farm products. Hardware, plumbing, et cetera. That's one whole section. Retail trade, you think you would think of it there from food, materials to general merchandise. Hotels, churches, professional offices on that. It's a pretty broad commercial zoning district designed to be. Yeah, as I said, on the major thoroughfares, which you know, the location that doesn't. Seem to be in opposite to where this episode should probably be, but again, it's up to this lobby to make the recommendations. That County Commission ultimately approve.
Does that, you feel that counsel's addressed your concern, Mr. Reary? Your satisfaction? Yes, sir. Okay. All right, does, are there any other questions or comments before we proceed to the vote? Okay, who made the motion to approve this now?
Ms. Ferris.
Mr. Ferris.
Miss.
Ms. Ferris.
Ms. Ferris. Ms. Ferris made the motion for approval and the second was from.
Mr. Chase.
Mr. Chase, okay. All right, so. The question before us is the rezoning request for Bunny George. Um, item that's tax map one thirty nine parcel thirty point zero seven nine point two zero acres located on highway forty eight South Dixon, Tennessee. This has got to be, by our rules, a roll call vote. Mr. Hayes, would you call the roll?
Todd Berry.
Yes.
Tina Ferris. Darren Green.
Yeah.
Robert Quall.
Yes.
Tommy Brown.
Yes.
Jeff Chase.
Yeah.
Randy Ramey.
Yes.
Amanda Berry.
Yes.
Patrick Reagan.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay. The, uh, the Dixon County Planning Commission has unanimously. Recommended that the county commission look favorably on the rezoning of tax map one thirty nine parcel thirty point zero seven nine point two acres, highway forty eight south.
Thank you.
Is there any other business that needfully should come before the commission at this time? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn with the understanding, the next regularly scheduled meeting, the Dixon County Planning Commission. Will be at this location at seven PM Central Daylight Time on July tenth, twenty twenty five.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Reagan, seconded by Mr. Berry, those in favor. You're adjourned.